Draft plan of condominium for twenty one Park Avenue. I've motion that report PD thirty twenty three relating to proposed draft plan of condominium for twenty one Park Avenue be received for information. And further that a public meeting be scheduled for September the eleventh, twenty twenty three in accordance with Ontario regulation five forty four slash oh six as amended. Moved by councillor Gibson, seconded by councillor Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to the Housing Accelerator Fund application. I have motion that report ADM twenty two twenty three relating to the Housing Accelerator Fund be received for information. And further that an application for Housing Accelerator Fund be submitted. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor McCauley.
Questions or comments? Councillor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you very much. I sent an email to Ms. Mooney this afternoon and I understand that Mr. Pompili is going to answer my questions at the podium. My first one was in regards to the second bullet point where it says further enhance. The, does that mean that we're going to enhance the CIP program or further enhance it by? What means?
Mr. Pompili.
Yes, thank you. Through your worship to the councillor's question, all very good question. The enhancements will be most likely twofold. The enhancements will have a consideration to enhancing the monetary value for. For conversions as well. We've looked at what other municipalities are offering and they do seem to offer a little bit more money. So just, just to get more uptake. We will be looking at, at enhancing some of the monetary features of the CIP, but a large chunk of it will also be to help promote the CIP. And, 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 and then the tools and the incentives that are in there citywide. Particularly in this case to even new home builders that maybe might be able to come up with some designs that, that are purpose designed to, to have a. Additional dwelling units or be flexible enough so that it could be converted down the road, but also other property owners throughout the city. To make them aware of the incentives that are there to encourage new housing throughout the city.
Councillor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. I have more. And I also noticed that the website, the city's website was updated as of August. Three weeks ago, two weeks ago. So that'll, any potential developer or anyone from the public interested in finding out this information, can you tell us a little bit about? What exists on those updates on the city's website?
I, I don't, I'm not privy to all the updates, but a lot of it is just out there just to make people aware of just the resources that are available. In the city to, to assist anybody with any of their, their, their housing or development plans and help them with those investments.
Go ahead.
I'm very grateful for that because when people are out in the community or when you're out to events, people talk about. Developers trying to research on our website in the past and not being able to find or locate information. So I'm very grateful for those updates. Also, it lists number eight as a priority order, but I understand from Taylor's response to my email that these are not in a priority order. Could we talk about number eight and what it says and, and why there is no set priority whatsoever?
Thank you for your question councillor. So yeah, like I mentioned to you, so right now we have a list of eight initiatives. The. First seven are the ones that will be scored on our application. We're only taking the first seven. They, we did talk to a CMHC rep and they indicated that we should have an additional. Initiative on there just in case one of the ones they, they didn't like for some reason, just so that we had a backup plan. So that number eight there is promote and allow more housing types that serve vulnerable populations. And we are ensuring that through this. Through this funding and through this program that these other initiatives that we have are also strategic in allowing those vulnerable populations to be served. So you'll see that number five is. Partnering with nonprofit housing providers to preserve and increase affordable housing throughout the city. So we have some projects that we know are happening currently in our city and that likely will happen in the next three years. So. That area of focus is reflected in the other pieces of our application regardless.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for that response and I thank you very much for following up with that email today as well. And I think Mr. Pompili. I really think this is something that is great underneath our strategic plan and I thank you again.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next five items relate to notice the public meeting from the Committee of Adjustment to take place on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty three at ten AM. First is an application for consent by Brahms Woodcraft to sever a vacant lot. With eighty one point thirty nine meters of frontage on Edward Street from the property at ten Ontario Roads to be used for employment lands uses. Second is an application for consent by the Algen County Railway Museum to sever a vacant lot with an area of three point two three hectares. From the property at two twenty five Wellington Street for future residential purposes. The next one is a consent application by Catherine Trujan and Paul Hurlbut to create a right of way over lands at nine five two zero sunset. To legalize an existing shared driveway with nine five oh eight sunset. And then a concurrent minor variance by Catherine Trujan to permit construction of a single detached dwelling, a swimming pool and a detached garage. Containing a second story additional residential unit with a building height of eight meters on well and septic services. Whereas the bylaw requires a water supply system, sanitary sewage system and a storm system. And the maximum permitted height for the detached accessory building is four meters. The last item under this committee, also for the Committee of Adjustment, is an application for a minor variance by Doug Terry Limited to permit. Eighty eight parking spaces, whereas a minimum of one hundred and thirteen parking spaces are required. And to modify the building area identified on the zoning map for the property on the west side of Highview Drive. Between Wellington and Forest and is for a five story eighty two unit apartment dwelling that's being proposed.
Councillor Clark.
Thank you. Can one staff just remind me who's on Committee of Adjustment? So for example, like. The reason I ask the question, all these items will not come back to us. They'll all be decided by the committee with no input from council. And so I'm just wondering who makes that decision.
Madam Clerk, do you have the names of the Committee of Adjustment members?
I'm not sure if I have all their names. There's three members that are appointed by council and they're from the public at large. But I can get you those specific names if, if the members would like.
That's what I thought. It was all. Public members. So what is the, what is the recourse if council didn't agree with one of their decisions?
Madam Clerk or Director of Planning?
And your worship, anyone that. Actually, the eligibility just changed. So maybe Mr. Pompili would like to answer this question as far as who is able to appeal.
Mr. Pompili.
Yes, council, council does have the ability to appeal a decision of the Committee of Adjustment. They are one of the public bodies that, that could appeal even with the changes from Bill twenty three. So if there was a concern with either any of the conditions. That were established by the committee or, or the decision, council could appeal that.
So would we have to ask for that to come back to us or how, how would that occur? We would find out what the Committee of Adjustment has said. And then bring it back up at council under new business, something to that effect. Okay. Thanks. Further questions or comments? Seeing none. Oh, sorry councillor Clark.
So would those items come back to us? As, at some point, I didn't recall that they would come back to us. So how would we know what the decision was to appeal it? Unless it was too late or whatever.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Your worship, so the, the minutes are posted and if there's a specific area that council wishes, I can ensure that. We forward a copy of the decision to the members.
Thank you. Yes. So if we could do that, then we would just see what had gone through the Community of Adjustment. If there's something we wanted to bring back to council, we could. Okay.
Sorry worship, if I could just mention, so the decision will be made on that day and then there's certain time period for the appeal. And anyone is welcome. It's a public meeting. Anyone is welcome to listen. It'll either be Teams or Zoom and so you'll know the decision if you have an opportunity to listen in on that particular day.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Seeing none.
Your worship, unless there are any further items for this committee. Council will now move into community engagement and services. The first item relates to purchase of a fire department industrial pumper. I have a motion that report FD oh six twenty three relating to the purchase of a fire department vehicle be received for information. And for the council authorized staff to move forward with the sole source procurement of an industrial fire pumper. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Councillor Clark.
Thank you worship. Just wonder if we could get city treasurer to outline what the timelines would be if we followed the tender process. It, it kind of bothers me that we're single sourcing something that's a couple of million dollars. So just wondering. How much of a delay there would be if we follow the process?
Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you. It really varies depending on what you're buying for a truck like that. It's fairly complicated. You have to lay out all the specifications for it. So everything in the. All, everything you want in the truck would have to be nailed down so that every company that's bidding on it would be bidding on the same thing. So I would say for something like this, it would be. Around three months to get the specs and put it out there and wait for the results.
Councillor Clark.
But wouldn't we have to take that same amount of time to do the specs even if it was single source so that we got what we wanted on the truck?
We can ask our fire chief and he'll. Chief.
Thank you. That's a great question. So we did our research with this. This is a unique piece of apparatus. It's an industrial pumper. It's not something that they do. On a daily basis in their production facilities. So we did some research and we reached out to the. The major companies that do this for a living that supply an industrial pumper to places like Suncor down around Chemical Valley. And there's three companies that, that basically do this as their business peers, which we already have Pierce, E one and Rosenbauer. We did this, we, we took the time with this and we, and we got some pricing and, and when we came back to the single source of going with E one, they were the cheapest of the bunch and they, and they were the ones that could deliver something like this. In a reasonable respectable amount of time.
Councillor Kohler, then councillor Baldwin Sands.
Thanks your worship. I, I think the chief did a pretty good job answering that because I, my, my concern is too, if I'm. Looking at this right, the main focus will be for the new industrial. Site and that's why I was wondering basically the same thing. That's going to be a little ways off other than the work that's currently going on there. I was wondering why we didn't have time to. Put it out for tender if, because we're looking at four years down the road before there's occupancy going to be taken there.
Correct. The, some of the build times that we, we got back were anywhere from twenty four to thirty eight months. And when we, when we look at some of the development, not just some of our recent acquisitions is other developments and some of the companies that we have. You know, Dalarckarn has some storage in town now with some chemicals and stuff. This is something that we can get through the company that we thought was the best route for the city to go. To, to meet these demands.
Councillor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. I'm glad the chief is there because we've talked about this before about not just about the price for this single source, but. We've always heard about E one having a higher quality as well. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So E one stands behind their, and that's a great question. E one stands behind their stuff. They have a great safety rating. And for those who have been to the fire hall and look at the apparatus we have on the floor, we have five E one products. So they are coming to end of life cycle, but. When their company representatives come down and see the trucks that we have that are twenty years old and say. They can't believe the condition they're in. It's because of the quality of the build. We have a couple other and I, and I won't mention brands that. Aren't holding up to the same standards as E ones. They're sold their safety ratings with their cab construction and, and their reliability. And, and the, the ability for E one representatives to be a phone call away. They're usually have some in, in London at, well, some other places and then in Woodstock. They come to us instead of our trucks going to them for service. So that's always been a great thing and, and, and the whole other part of with being with E one. When you have an emergency situation and you have to jump into a truck that you're not going to use a whole lot of time, familiarity. Of getting behind the wheel and operating the pump and whatever is a great asset to us also.
Okay. Further questions? Councillor Herbert.
Thank you worship. So, so last year we budgeted seven hundred thousand for a truck because you guys went to Vancouver. You thought you had one, right? And it turned out you didn't have one. So we, we were sitting now at two point four million. So is, is the rest of the funding for the, this truck that you want now and the one that's going to be tendered? Is this all going to be part of the, of the industrial development project?
So, great question. So back to the one in Vancouver. That didn't work out for us because we were, we were shown pictures of a brand new truck. When we got there, it was a highly used truck out in the city of Vancouver. This truck had forty thousand kilometers on it. Our trucks are twenty years old and. We're just around fifty thousand kilometers. So this truck was a year old and it had like forty thousand kilometers. We're kind of led to believe this was, you know, through the pictures, this was a brand new truck. We get there and it wasn't what we had thought. So we were kind of sold of bad goods with as far as funding the replacement of this truck like through. Broader industrial development, right? The funds will come from the broader industrial development.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Thank you, chief. That is carried by the way.
Next we move into infrastructure and civic operations. First item relates to City Hall frontage redesign. I have motion that report PR twenty one twenty three relating to the City Hall frontage redesign be received for information. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you.
Next item relates to parking control on Dalewood Drive. I have motion that report ES forty seven twenty three relating to parking control on Dalewood Drive be received for information. And for the council direct that a bylaw be prepared for its consideration to amend traffic and parking bylaw forty five dash eighty nine. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments on the report? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to traffic and parking control modifications in various locations in the city. I have motion that report ES. Forty nine twenty three relating to traffic and parking mod, uh, control modifications in various locations be received for information. And for the council direct that a bylaw be prepared for its consideration to amend traffic and parking bylaw forty five dash eighty nine. Moved by councillor Kohler, seconded by councillor Peters.
Questions or comments? Councillor Peters.
Thanks worship. A couple of items on the report I'd like to speak to and one item I will raise later under new business. I'll start with the St. Catherine parking lot and the drop off changes for the new daycare. I'm, I'm concerned that when we lost that parking lot to the daycare, we lost a lot of public parking. That was two hour parking and available. We've regained some of it with the, with the Westlake Evans parking, but we haven't regained at all. And almost all of these spaces are being allocated to the new childcare center, long term, permit only. And I'd like to see some consideration being given before we approve this portion, or at least it could, or it can come back in another report. That we look at the exact needs of the daycare. And allocate those spots, but why allocate a whole block of land if they're not going to be using them and. So I, and I'm concerned we have two parking spots right by the tourist station and I don't think that there's any other public parking. I'd also like to see in this review, a, a look at. The parking that exists to the north of this to Kane Street. Because that is all now two, it, it is permit parking only. So we have virtually restricted any public access. The whole strip from the entrance to the daycare all the way to Kane Street. And there's no way. I, I can only ever remember one day of the week that it was busy in those, in that parking lot and that was Tuesdays on court day. So I'd like some consider, I would appreciate some consideration given to how we can deal with the parking spaces to the north. On the east side and I'll come back to the condition of the road later on. Secondly, moving across the street to where we talked about Curtis successful parking spaces. If you are going northbound on St. Catherine Street and turning west onto Curtis Street. With the redesign of the intersection because now traffic is going to be going straight. It's already difficult to turn the corner. You have to nose your way out. Can consideration be given to removing the first parking space on the north side of Curtis Street? Just to allow better turning around the corner westbound onto Curtis Street. Because right now it gets a little jammed up. If cars are turning. Particularly right now with construction only left. It's a bit of a traffic jam. And also I, I didn't see anything in this report as to what the parking is going to be. In the new Westlake Evans Park. Is there going to be permit spots in there for library staff? Is it all going to be for library staff? Is there public parking over there? That's not clear in this report. And as I say, I'll raise the road condition in a, under new business. Thank you.
Okay, is there any answers to councillor Peters' questions or should we? Okay. Kevin, mister.
Through you mayor to councillor Peters. Your first question was a, or one of your questions was about the removal of a parking space on Curtis. In order to facilitate left hand turn movements from.
Right hand from St. Catherine to Curtis.
Right hand from St. Ca, okay, we'll take that back and we'll take a review and if it needs to be removed for turning movements, we'll, we'll bring that back for traffic bylaw amendment. You mentioned. Parking loss and maybe all the parking spaces within the new facility may not be needed. I understand there's an operating agreement in place to that effect. And so if there are underutilized spaces, we could probably look at that in the future. To determine what that extent might be. And if there is, we could maybe remove some of that permanent parking spaces in that location. I think your last question was about the north side towards.
That, that stretch where I took you, took you worship, I took you for a walk that day and I'm going to come back to the road condition in a sec. But that whole stretch from where the pavement ends all the way to Kane Street is all permit only parking. I don't know who, who we're selling the permits to, but we have lost so much public parking down there and it would be nice to see. That turned into two hour parking. A lot of people use it as a starting point for the trail as well too, because the trail, Mackenzie Trail ending right there. A lot of people start and end their trips and they look and there's no place to park.
Through you worship to councillor Peters, we'll review to see if we have. Permanent parking permits issued for that area and what the uptake is and then be able to bring that back to council if we need to change that. To allow two hour parking as suggested.
And then the last one was the new Westlake Evans parking. What, what is the restrictions on it over?
In that piece, I'm gonna have to ask my colleague here to help provide some, shed some light in that regard.
Mr. Bray.
Thank you mayor. Preston, through you to councillor Peters. Westlake Evan Park right now overnight ES staff are allowed to park their vehicles. Their, their company vehicles through the day at present. It's scheduled for public parking. Library staff are not parking there. We will get signs up. I thought they'd be up by now.
So we'll, I'll ask, so there'll be, will we sign all two hour?
Right now I think it's, we're gonna, we're gonna try eight hour. And we'll see how it goes, but we've been very clear, library staff have designated spots. If the overnight for ES becomes problematic, we'll relocate them, but there's an understanding they're not to park the vehicles there through the day.
Further questions? Councillor Gibson.
Yes, I'm not sure if it's Kevin or Jeff, but the. Our last MAC meeting, there was an indication that there were supposed to be two parking spaces for accessibility and there's only one there. So we're just wondering if there was an adjustment done and it didn't come to the MAC committee.
Stringer.
Through the mayor to councillor Gibson. A portion of this report in that section talks about having an accessible layby area just adjacent to where the fire hydrant is. That was, I believe, the outcome or the consensus of a meeting onsite with, with the accessible advisory committee representatives. To try and increase the number of accessible parking adjacent to the library entrance.
to try and increase the number of accessible parking adjacent to the library entrance.
So that little indentation that's on St. Catherine Street, that's part of what you're saying is for accessibility as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Or Curtis, I'm sorry.
Curtis, yes, on Curtis Street.
Thank you, thank you. So the, the other question is, um, the the accessible parking space you have there now, is that under vehicle A or B? A is for a van, B is for a car. So I'm just, I'm looking at it and I, it's on an angle, so it's, it's, I'm not seeing if it's exactly what it's supposed to be. So if you can answer, that'd be great.
Uh, through the mayor to Council Gibson. From my understanding, the, on Curtis Street, the additional accessible layby spaces will be parallel parking, not angled parking. Maybe I'm thinking, or maybe there's a different area that I'm not sure of.
Yeah, so we're looking at the north end of the building, right by the entrance, just this corner up here. So it's on a, on an angle, so that's angle parking all along there. So I'm not sure if that's, if the, the width is, the length is awesome, but the width, I'm just questioning the width, if it's for a car or, for a vehicle A or a B. So because it's on an angle, I'm not seeing it. So I was just wondering if you have any
Uh, through the mayor to Council Gibson, I can take a look at that to let you know if it's a type A or type B based on the width. But I, I'm not quite familiar with exactly the parking stall you're talking about, so I'll need to go walk out and take a look.
Okay, that would be wonderful if we can connect on that. I would appreciate that. I'd be willing even to walk over and look at it with you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Seeing done on the report, those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Your worship, unless the members have any further questions under this committee?
Councilor Peters does.
Uh, thanks worship, uh, under new business, I'd like to, uh, raise the subject that I was talking about previously regarding parking in the upper St. Catherine's lot. We've done an amazing job of creating a new daycare, paved parking spaces. And with the way that the roads are laid out internally, one of the roads has the vehicles doing a complete loop around off St. Catherine, back to St. Catherine. Yet we've painted an arrow on that's also encouraging traffic to drive northbound and exit onto Kane Street, which I'm not opposed of. Historically, that has always happened. But before the construction began, that was paved, it had, at least it was tar and chipped. The construction destroyed the road. It is a gravel road now. I sit in my back deck and watch the dust cloud begin. And I, I've spoken with Jeff Bray about it. And Jeff said it wasn't in the contract to rebuild the daycare. Okay, then, then it's an engineering responsibility. So I've gone for a walk with our new city engineer, we walked around the whole site. And key, I won't put words as most agreed that probably something needed to be done, but it's not been budgeted for. So we, we create this beautiful facility and send people onto a dirt road. And I'm just would hoping that council might provide some direction to staff to see what it may cost to tar and chip this, pave this. I know it's not budgeted. But there, there may be reserves available, there may be surpluses from some contracts. Uh, I, I don't know, but if, if so, if we could take a look at this. But the other one that has been my bugaboo all along, and if you, any of you went for a walk today, it is the guard rail. The guard rail that starts at the tourist station and ends at Kane Street. It has been hit by snowplows, it, it's leaning over, it is falling apart. Again, on the daycare portion, Jeff tells me that wasn't part of the contract. So no budget money was allocated. And it's the same question that comes up that from an aesthetic point of view, we've got this great thing and we've got a, a hazard. Because one of the considerations that was never even given is this Westlake Evans Park is supposed to link into our trail system. But not included in the contract was a connection from Upper, Upper Queens or Upper St. Ca- Catherine and our trail system. So there's a barrier, there's a steel barrier in the way. There's no path to the trail. So there's, to me, there's a few items that are related to the new daycare that have not been completed. And my understanding is in all of these cases, nothing was budgeted for it. And I'm just hoping that council would be supportive of at least asking staff to direct staff to report back to us what it may cost to finish the project properly. Thanks.
So you're asking for a report back on the paving or chip and tarring of the back alley that matches? And the removal of the guard rail?
Or just rebuild? Removal, replacement, repair?
Okay.
I'm not saying it needs to be replaced, but it's, it's just, it's a disaster zone. And also that the drainage be taken into consideration on that laneway. There is a drain that fills in with debris all the time. It's a city sanitary, there's a storm drain.
Okay. Counselor Wookiee? Okay, so I'm just trying to see kind of approval to move to ask for a report on the other. So I'm seeing nods, so I'm okay with that. Back to you, Counsel Wookiee, and then Counsel Gibson, did you have a point? Counsel Wookiee first.
Thank you, worship. For, for staff and my colleagues' information, I, I sat down last week with the owners at two forty six Talbot Street, which is the corner of Queen and Talbot, the one that had all the scaffolding on it for a long time. And we had a very pleasant chat and their situation is they received a twenty-three thousand dollar water bill. And there's a lot that goes along with this twenty-three thousand dollar water bill. I want to be, make sure everyone's fully aware. They, they know they don't apply under the catastrophic policy because they're commercial, not residential. There was an issue with estimated water bills. I've been in contact with Mr. Lee Buck and his department regarding this. I met with them to basically make them aware of the fact that, yes, they know they don't, they don't, it doesn't correspond with the policy. But I said to them, you have a right to, uh, come to council and ask for, ask to address council. So I want my colleagues to know that they might get calls from the owners there to touch base with you to share their information. They sent me a, a quite a bit of information on their side of the story. And I asked them if I could share that with members of council and staff, I will share that. So you will all be receiving this information from me and then after the meeting sometime, just so you're aware. And I think they will be asking for a deputation. That's just, I just want to provide that information in the context for you regarding this. They have paid the twenty-three thousand dollar bill. But there is, uh, I, I'll let them ask, tell you what they're asking for. All right, and if any of my colleagues or staff have questions for me further regarding my conversation with them, I'd be pleased to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wookiee. Counsel Gibson?
I just wanted to say I supported what Steve was saying about the guard rails there. Thank you.
Any further items under this committee? Seeing none.
The next committee is corporate governance and administration. Uh, first item is the finalization of federal electoral districts. Have motion that report ADM nineteen twenty-three relating to the finalization of federal electoral districts, be received for information. I move by Council McCully, seconded by Council Clark.
Questions, comments? Counsel Peters?
Um, thanks, uh, your worship. I, I think we need to say it on the record, extending our thanks to MP Vecchio.
Absolutely.
Um, Karen and her staff took a, a great leadership role in, in advocating and engaging the public and engaging councils all across the, the county and the two counties. Um, and I just would like to make sure that we publicly acknowledge Karen and say thank you for her efforts.
Thank you for sharing that. Further questions or comments? Counsel Clark?
Yes, I, I think it's under this committee, but I was just wondering if, if we could ask staff in preparation for the work that we'll be doing in the fall on the budget is a, a report from Valley View on the cost to expand the day program. I know we talked about it in the past, that there's a waiting list of over a hundred people for that program. And I know it would take some time to look for, you know, an, another site or an addition or whatever. So I'd just like a, a re- a report in the fall at some point so that we can, we can talk about it, whether or not the, it's, it's needed to do, be done through grants or whether it's something that could be done through the budget.
Okay. Not seeing anybody say no to you, so let's ask for that. Okay. Anything else under corporate governance and administration? Seeing none? We didn't vote on which one? Oh, the federal electoral districts, yes. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carried.
Your worship, with no further items for corporate governance, council will now reconvene into regular session. Have motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council and committee the whole as recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, gratified and adopted. Moved by Council Wookiee, seconded by Council Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next, we move into reports of committees. Uh, first, uh, first one relates to a report from the St. Thomas Public Art Committee regarding lights at six oh five Talbot Street. Have motion that report STPAC oh one twenty-three relating to dandelion lights at six oh five Talbot Street. Be received for information. And further, the council approved the acquisition and installation of the dandelion lights beside six oh five Talbot Street as set out in report STPAC oh one twenty-three. And further, that the dandelion lights at six oh five Talbot Street be included as part of the city's public art inventory. And moved by Council Gibson, seconded by Council Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Sorry, was that a question, Counsel Peter?
Comment, and I just, it, I, I just trust that we can monitor these and ensure that they do not get vandalized. I took a, a drive down Talbot today and we need to ask staff to go out and look at the alleyway beside the old Royal Bank. Um, that had, if some of you remember the mirrors that were installed in there. Well, the mirrors are heavily vandalized right now. So I, I just want to have the comfort level that these are vandal proof and that we're not, you know, seeing someone's talent, just like the mirror project, an artistic individual seeing their product vandalized. Um, just want to make sure that this stuff is going to be vandal proof, too.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, and all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
The second report on this evening's meeting is the St. Thomas Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee annual site audit report. I have motion that report M A A C oh one twenty-three relating to the municipal accessibility advisory committee annual site audit report for twenty twenty-three, be received for information. And further, that report M A A C oh one twenty-three be referred to the accessibility technical committee and leadership team. Moved by Council Gibson. Seconded by Council Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Counsel Gibson? Counsel Herbert to follow.
Yes, I would just like to say, uh, thanks to John organizing the audit report that we were able to go out to a few destinations and take a look to see what we can do to make it safe for everybody to have accessibility. I also would like to, uh, thank Adrian out at the parks. She made sure within three days, they had four of our suggested items taken care of, which was really fantastic. Her and her staff quickly turned around a few items for us and painted up a few areas for the sightseeing. So very pleased to see that how quickly staff and, and the board really appreciates that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Gibson. Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. This is an excellent report. It, it shows there are definitely problems out there. What is the timeframe for some of these deficiencies to be corrected? Is there a timeframe? Do we have to put it into a budget to, to make sure they're done? Or is it just something that is the departments look at it, we need to do it and they fix it? So is there a timeframe? That's what I'm curious.
I, I would, I would ask that they, they do this type of work each year. Now, it's not always the same areas, but as Counsel Gibson has already said, that they, they, many of them are immediately done when brought to the attention of our staff. But Counsel Gibson, comment on that?
Yeah, just to follow up, they tend to do sites every five years. Uh, unless someone brings the concerns to our committee, then we go, we, we would go back out and take another look at it.
Counsel Clark?
Thanks, I was just wondering if there's any items that have been kind of longstanding that are of budget concerns? Or, you know, it, it's great to hear that we're knocking off a number of the, of them right away and that it shows how dedicated staff are. But I'm just wondering if there's any larger ticket items that have been delayed and that we need to look at in the budget.
Would we be asking staff to let us know that? Okay. Great. Further questions on the audit report? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
No further reports, your worship. We now move into petitions and communications. First item is request for proclamation, flag raising and jumbo lighting for, from Big Brothers Big Sisters. I have motion that council of the city of St. Thomas proclaim September eleventh, twenty twenty-three to September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three as Big Brother Big Sister Month in the city of St. Thomas. And further, that the jumbo monument be lit in teal on September the eleventh to the seventeenth in recognition of Big Brother Big Sister Month. And further, that the Big Brother Big Sister Month flag be flown at City Hall from the eleventh to the seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Council Baldwin Sands, seconded by Council Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried.
Second is a request for proclamation and bell ringing relating to fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness. I have motion that council of the city of St. Thomas proclaim September ninth, twenty twenty-three as fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness day in the city of St. Thomas. And further, that the bells at City Hall ring nine times at nine oh nine AM on September ninth, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Council Clark, seconded by Council Kohler.
Questions or comments? Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. I, I just wanted to ta- uh, take a moment to thank Ethel de la Penate here. She's been the driving force behind this for many, many years and she continues to do it. So I, I, I think it's just, I wanted to recognize her for all the hard work she has done to, for this program. So anyway, thank you.
Okay. On the request? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item is a letter received from Gord and Terry Snell regarding throwing of axes for recreational purposes. I have a motion that the letter received from Gord and Terry Snell of Peachtree Boulevard regarding the throwing of axes for recreational purposes in a neighboring backyard be referred to the planning and building services department for a report. I move by Council Wookiee, seconded by Council Kohler.
Questions or comments? Counsel Herbert?
Thank you. Th- this was very interesting for me to read, but my, my question is, do we set this aside for a month to find out what's happening with it? Or can they continue to do this? Or is there something they have to stop until it's approved? Uh, we don't meet again for another month. So I, they do raise a lot of concern, the neighbors, so I'm, I just curious, what do we, do we just let them keep doing it until we look at it in another month? Is, or do, do we shut them down and say, you can't do it till we get it approved? That's my question.
Okay.
Well, I don't have the answer to the question, but if they, if they're doing something that at the moment is deemed legal, but now is being asked about, I think it has to go to our staff to find out from a bylaw point of view, is there a bylaw that's being broken? That I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm just saying that, you know, we, we have to ask that, so.
There really isn't a vote on this. Counsel Kohler?
I, I guess just on that, I know it's going back to staff for a report. But in the meantime, if they're looking at that and they find something that is untoward, if they'd obviously well, shut it down before coming back to council, right?
You're right, from a bylaw point of view, if they found something that makes it too close to a lot line or something that, that fits our bylaws, then I would expect it's act-
I would expect it's acted on before it comes back. All in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Our next item is a letter received from, uh, residents of twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and thirty-one Pole Court uh, regarding some railway ties between the property at eighty-one Fairview and the rear of, uh, the Pole Court properties. I have a motion that the letter received from the residents of twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and thirty-one Pole Court regarding the railway ties between eighty-one Fairview and, uh, the twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and thirty-one Pole Court properties be referred to the Parks and Recreation and Facilities Department for a report. Uh, moved by Counsel Kohler, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments? Counsel Herbert?
Yes, thank you, Worship. Well, I guess my question is, when I read this, are these ties on private property? Are they on city property?
That's a great question. I wondered the same thing.
That'd be my question.
Does anybody have an answer for us on that? Nobody? Counsel Kohler?
I think that, that's why I was gonna ask, and I definitely supported for the report, because I think that's part of the investigation, because I know the, the property behind is certainly, I think, part of our housing stock, and from what I heard from past residents that it being there, that so, that this is has been put there by the city, so I'm thinking that it might be something that we have to replace.
Well, that's, we've asked for it to go to the appropriate department for a report back to us, so let's do that. Okay? Uh, questions, further questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item is a letter received from the Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs, Infrastructure, and Communities regarding, uh, federal government funding for brownfield remediation in response to a letter sent by council. Uh, your worship, no further items under petitions, uh, at this time, unless there's something from the members.
Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. It's in regards to that letter received by, um, the Honorable Dominic LeBlanc, Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs. I, it addresses in there, um, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and what I was hoping for is maybe a report back from staff is, are we members of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, which I guessing that we are not, and maybe that is something that we as a council should be looking into. It's out of possibility.
City manager, you and I have had this discussion recently, so I'll let you answer.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, through you, oops, to the members of council, we are not currently members of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, but we have been exploring that. Uh, and should we have an interest in doing that? Should council have an interest in doing that? We could build it into the budget uh, for two thousand and twenty-four. I have been in contact with FCM about this. Uh, and I think, uh, there's value in looking at it, and I can bring it back as a recommendation to this council for some consideration. It is, it has a, an an approximate, uh, amount that we would have to obviously put forward. It's a, a sizable amount, and we need to look at the value, but I have done some research with other municipalities um, about the value of being involved in it, and I think there's a discussion for us to have for sure.
Go ahead, Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Thank you very much for those comments. Um, I am curious to know as when we might receive the report back, so if it is a sizable amount, when we would have that before budget deliberations?
Yeah, I would expect we'll get it back here before then, because it would have to be in next year's budget, so we'd have to be doing that as part of budgeting for next year. And I will, I'll add to what the city manager has said, and is look at, as we grow as a community, it is now our place that we probably need to move into the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, along with the Royal Ontario Municipalities and the Ontario, the A, AMO, Association of Municipalities for Ontario. Um, in speaking with the mayor of London, who's now, I think, one of the chairs of the big city mayors, he's been handling our requests, and so we certainly can continue to talk even like the letter we just received through the mayor of London on our behalf, but I think it will, it would suit us well, just my opinion, that we, that we do do this next year. Counsel Baldwin Sands?
And I do believe Counselor Frankie is, or Frank is also on the Board of Directors of FCM.
Okay. There wasn't really a vote on that? That was for information purposes? Yes, great.
Uh, your worship, if, um, we're done with this particular order of business, we'll move into unfinished business of council. And seeing no items from the members, we'll now move into new business of council. I worship seeing that.
I, I'm gonna take one, one spot on new business. Um, I, I want to thank, uh, Counselor Herbert, so that he can pass it on to his wife Rita. They've been coaching Stephanie and I for Dancing with the Stars. Um, uh, your mayor has no rhythm whatsoever, and, and he has found my ability to dance. So for those of you that would like to see how we're able to do that, September eighth, we'll be dancing with the stars. And so since we really won't have too many more meetings before that, I wanted to invite you all to take your great spot in the audience and, and, and see what not only the mayor and Stephanie can do, but what also seven other couples involved this year in Dancing with the Stars. So I said I would let people know that we're, we're doing it. Thanks, and thanks, Jim, for your patience. He hit me. Counsel Clark?
And who's the charity for that?
Uh, I know that the, that in the past that it is this, the railway station, the Keso Station piece, yes. Further, new business? Done, great. Next.
We'll now move into bylaws. I have motioned that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
I have a motion by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Clark, that the report of council and committee of the whole on the following bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time engrossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Thank you. First bylaw, please.
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the fourteenth day of August, two thousand and twenty-three.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? That item carries. Next item, please.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight, being the zoning bylaw for the city of St. Thomas, and this is to remove the prohibition on entertainment centers and to establish regulations for such uses.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Item carries. Third item, please.
Third bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and one seven one one six six four Ontario Inc. This relates to a grant acknowledgement agreement, uh, under the Community Improvement Plan for five seventy-three Talbot Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Item carries. Number four, please.
Fourth bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine, being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regulating traffic in the parking of motor vehicles. This relates to no parking zones on Dalewood Drive.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Item carries. Fifth bylaw, please.
Fifth and final bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine, being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regulating traffic and parking of motor vehicles. Uh, this relates to no stopping, no parking, restricted parking, stop signs, parking lot rates and locations, and relating to the areas St. Catherine Street, Curtis Street, Hammond Street, and the laneway south of Talbot Street between Metcalf and Elgin Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Item carries. Your worship, I rise and report the successful passing of the five bylaws.
Great.
I have a motion by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Clark, that the report of council and committee of the whole on the five bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time engrossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Let's carry it.
No, no, no public notices or notices of motion this evening, your worship. Uh, at this time, uh, there is a need to move into closed session. I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with three personal matters about identifiable individuals, a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality, and a proposed or pending disposition of land. Uh, your worship, um, following this particular motion, it is six o'clock. I would suggest that council recess and, um, uh, move into closed session after the public meeting.
Sounds like the right path.
Just need a mover and a seconder for, uh, moved by Counsel Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counsel Herbert.
So if I could remind our audience tonight and our folks at home that we will now be moving into a public meeting, um, and immediately into closed session as, after we finish the public meeting. Um, so, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Now, do I have to? Yeah. Let me know when we're going public. What did I give away? Oh, yeah. Well, goes without saying. Counsel Kohler's been. Yeah, well, we, I'll go right to the public meeting, so if you tell me it's time, I'm going. Wookiee's in the room. McCully's in the room, so. Okay, because I've got a lot to read anyway. Ladies and gentlemen, I, it, it being six o'clock, I will call this public meeting to order. The public meeting is required under the Planning Act to afford any person an opportunity to make representation with respect to proposed amendments through the Airport Zoning Protections Bylaw thirty-six dash two zero one nine, to reflect changes to the city's boundary brought about by Bill sixty-three, and to add two new map parts to the mapping to show the regulated areas of city lands. Before we begin, the public members of the public are advised that if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make written submissions to the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas before the bylaws pass, a person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Therefore, if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make written submission to the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas before the bylaws pass, a person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal. Unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there's reasonable grounds to do so. Those wanting to be notified, the decision should email customerservice@customerservice@stthomas.ca and provide their name and address. Those who do not have access to a computer and wish to be notified could call customerservice at five one nine six three one one six eight zero, extension zero, and provide your name. Do any members of council have a disclosure of interest concerning any of the matters on the agenda for this public meeting? Seeing none? Then I'll ask our clerk, what method of notice would, and when was the notice given to the public for this meeting?
Your worship, notice was provided, uh, published actually in the St. Thomas Times Journal on Friday, July the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. Um, I'm going to introduce the plant, manager of planning services, Jim McCoom. Great to have you back, Jim. Um, uh, who will provide the background information and present the, the draft bylaw.
Thank you, Worship. Happy to be here with council tonight. Um, I'd like to first preface the, uh, introduction of this particular amendment by, for anybody in the public that is, um, listening in tonight or, or watching, this amendment to the bylaw is simply a mapping exercise. It's to bring two new map parts in to the bylaw for the, the St. Thomas version of the bylaw. There are existing maps in the Central Elgin version of the bylaw, but the changes do not affect any of the surfaces of the bylaw or any of the technical aspects of the bylaw. This is simply a mapping exercise, as we shall see. So the first part of this amendment states that the city of St. Thomas Airport zoning map index to bylaw thirty-six dash twenty nineteen is hereby deleted, and Schedule A to the amendment is hereby adopted and shall be known as the City of St. Thomas Airport Zoning Bylaw Index to bylaw thirty-six dash twenty nineteen as amended. So here is that index map, and on the upper right corner of the map, you'll see map parts ten and eleven, and those are the two new map parts that are being brought in, and they are reflective of the existing map parts, I believe it's three and eight in the Central Elgin version. Next part of the amendment states that Schedule B to this bylaw is hereby adopted and shall be known as City of St. Thomas Airport Zoning Map ten to bylaw thirty-six dash twenty nineteen as amended. And we have a copy of that, uh, new bylaw or that new map. And on the map, you'll see the, the area that's shown a little like a brighter yellow is actually the area that's within the city. The areas that are shaded a little bit are, uh, areas that are within Central Elgin. And finally, part four of the amendment states that Schedule C to this bylaw is hereby adopted and shall be known as City of St. Thomas Airport Zoning Map eleven to bylaw thirty-six dash twenty nineteen as amended. And we have a copy of the draft of, uh, map eleven, and again, it's just the area in the upper left corner in the brighter yellow that is reflective of the area that's been brought into the city through Bill sixty-three. Balance of the area would still be in Central Elgin. And that is the draft, worship, of the proposed amendment, if there's any questions.
Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, have we received any written submissions on the proposed changes?
Your worship, there were no written submissions received.
Okay. Now, I'll ask council if they have any questions, and if you do, raise your hand, and we'll ask Mr. McCoom to answer all your tough questions. I'll see. Now I scared them off, Jim. If we have no questions from council, I'll now open the meeting to questions from the public. For those attending who have not already submitted their concerns or comments to the city, if you're listening on your computer, tablet, or smart, smartphone, please click the raised hand icon. And if you have dialed, have called into the meeting using a telephone, please use star nine. Questions will be taken in that order, and then when given the opportunity to speak, please provide your name and address for the clerk's records. So, do we have any attendees on the computer or phone that wish to speak? I have a Corey with his hand up. So Corey, when we unmute you or you unmute yourself, please, uh, give us your full name and address and ask your question. And we'll watch for the muting to, unmuting to happen. There we go. You should be okay now, Corey. Give us your name, address, and your question.
Yeah, it's, uh, Corey Sullivan. Uh, I live at, uh, four four five oh three Talbot Line, uh, just by Yarmouth Centre and number three highway there. So I just, uh, it, I, I obviously, this is a little bit tough to, you know, it, it happens so quick, like the pictures in that. Can we get a copy of, uh, the two slides that we saw there? If, uh, if I email somebody or something, just to, uh, see what changes are gonna be happening in the future?
Yes, we can get, get you a copy of that slide deck, the two or three. Mr. McCoom is taking on that responsibility, Corey, and we'll make sure that he gets them to you.
Okay, all right, because, uh, uh, I guess the other question is, are they gonna be expanding the, uh, existing runways? There's been rumor about that, so just kinda would like some clarification, just because our, our property, uh, does back up to the existing airport?
My understanding is not, but, uh, uh, Mr. McCoom, and from a planning point of view.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, Corey, based on the address he provided, the, um, this amendment to the, to the zoning bylaw doesn't even affect your property. You're in the area, the, the, the zoning bylaw, you're affected by the Central Elgin version of it. Um, yeah, there's, there's no plan to, uh, expand the runway at this time. Uh, but if you'd like copies of those maps, uh, absolutely, you can reach out to me here at the city. Um, I, I'm on the staff directory, you can just, uh, look me up and send me an email, I'd be happy to, uh, happy to send you, uh, copies of the map, so you can see for yourself.
Yep, okay, yeah, that's, uh, that's, uh, much appreciated, because, uh, like I said, you try and zoom in, but they kind of disappear a little bit quick, so.
Yeah, right.
Other than that, I, I guess, uh, that's all I really had, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Corey. Is there anyone else on our list of, uh, viewers tonight that have input for this public meeting? Is there anyone else on our list of uh, viewers tonight that have input for this public meeting? I'll give a minute for hands to go up. Again, use your raise hand function if you're on a computer, smartphone or. Or iPad or any other device. If you're not, it's the the star nine um, to raise your hand if you're on a phone. And I'm seeing no other responses there. I'll ask again, is there anyone else with further input here? Please use your raised hand fu- or raise hand function or uh, your star nine on your phone. And then I'll also ask, is council have any further questions? I'm going to suggest that everyone has been given a fair opportunity to express their views. If there are no further questions, please be advised that any person wishing further information on the actions of council regarding the passing. Of a bylaw for the proposed amendment should email customer service at customer service at stthomas.ca. And provide their name and address. Those who do not have access to a computer and wish to be notified. Should call customer service at five one nine six three one one six eight zero, extension zero. And provide the same information. This public meeting is now concluded. With the conclusion of the public meeting, we'll now go into closed session. I'll give us a moment to accomplish all of that fun stuff.